I am running for Summit County Council because I believe it is very important at this point in our country's history and with the county that we retain a diversity of skill sets on our council. I began my journey in Summit County almost nine years ago when my husband and I, as newly weds, moved to the Liberty Peak Affordable Housing Complex in Summit County. We had the opportunity there to interact with many workers in the community to understand different struggles that people face when they're working at the bars, working at the ski lift, working in all of our different industries. During this time, I also served and established the Victim Advocacy Program at Park City Police Department. There, I had the opportunity to work with victims of violent crime, to assist them with struggles within their lives, as well as help them through the criminal justice process. While doing this, I realized that I needed to gain additional information so that I could continue serving this community. And so I pursued a master's degree in public administration with an emphasis in local government policy. Following receiving my degree and several projects involving Summit County, I gave birth to my son, and then, following maternity leave, I joined the Snyderville Basin Planning Commission. On the Planning Commission, I have been able to tackle many large projects with the commission, including the Canyon's Master Plan, the Kimball Junction Master Plan, and other large-scale projects within the community that has impact on how people live, work, and play here. I have served as Chair of the Planning Commission and Chair of the Snyderville Social Justice Committee. I've also served as the Chair of the Summit County Domestic Violence Coalition, and I have worked with various nonprofits to strive to assist victims of violent crime and members of our entire community, as we all try to increase our quality of life and establish and retain that for our community moving forward. Currently, I run the government budget for Park City Police Department, and I'm a member of the command staff team there.
Thank you, Melina. Let's hand it over to Canis.
Hi, I'm Canis Hart, and I'm running for County Council. I am fortunate to be able to call Summit County home for the last 14 years. In 2006, my wife Katie Wang and I moved to the community as part of a job relocation, and we quickly realized that we love this community and we love being a part of it. And one of the many great things we love is that if you're willing to volunteer and put yourself out there, the community will accept you in that. And so, early on, I joined actually the Park City Rotary Club. I'm a past president, and I'm also the Assistant Governor for the state. And one of the things that this did is it created opportunities and avenues for me to start volunteering. I was actually a volunteer DJ over at KPZW for many years. I volunteered at the Adaptive Bobsledding Program. And currently, I serve on the Board of the Friends of Summit County Search and Rescue, which reports into the Sheriff's Department. And I really enjoy this. And so Rotary has created many of these opportunities for me. Over the 14 years that I've lived in the community, I've also had two small businesses here. So something that's unique to me and my qualities is that I've actually had businesses, I've had employees, and I've had to understand what it's like to plan and adapt. As an entrepreneur, you really get pretty keyed in on strategic thinking and understanding how to get to the root causes of problems. As I think about what's happening now in our community, I think my skill set lends itself well to running for council. I've been on the Planning Commission for, oh, it's seven plus, over seven years now. So I'm in my third term. On the Planning Commission, you're allowed to have three terms, so I'm going to term out, and after this, I can no longer serve. So as I was thinking about what I could do next to continue this line of service, running for County Council was an obvious choice for me. Having been on the Planning Commission for as long as I have, I've been on numerous subcommittees and almost too many to list at times, but obviously tackle some pretty big topics, including the rewrite or the update of the general plan, which is the guiding document that leads us in our development here in the county. Service for me started quite early in life. I joined the Marine Corps, which is really a sense of, out of a sense of really just duty and passion and love of country. While I was in, I managed to get into Third Reconnaissance Battalion and was a team leader. So I would say team leadership is something that I learned at a very early age, working with very diverse groups of people. It's something that you might not know about me, is I actually have a background in the medical industry. I worked as a physical therapy aide for many years. In this, I created an outdoor education program at the Rehabilitation Institute of Chicago. I also led the rehabilitation and assisted for gang members who had been shot, and did that for several years before coming out here. I'm running for County Council because I believe in our community, I believe in our people, I believe my skill set aligns itself perfectly for the challenges we're facing. So I hope you will consider me and give me your vote for County Council.
All right, thanks, Canis. I want to start off tonight with a question that ties to current events in the country. Park City's elected officials recently came out with a formal statement in the wake of George Floyd's killing and police custody and the nationwide protests that have ensued, saying that bias and systemic racism in fact exist in our community. Do you agree? If so, what would you do as a County Councilor to address that? Canis will have you answer first.
Thank you, Bubba. I appreciate that question. Yeah, I think you would have to quickly say yes. You know, when we take a look at our society and culture across the entire country, and it includes systemic racism and biases, I mean, that's sort of baked into our society. I would say, as you look at things like our police force, I believe we ask too much of them to a large extent. We've now taken social issues and created and turned it into a policing issue. Our police could use more funding, and we could also use redirect funds into other programs. And we have several social programs in the county that lend itself to helping in this area, but it's easy to say yes, this is something we will continue to have to work on through our lifetime and beyond.
Melina, go ahead.
Summit County has been very proactive in how we've approached issues of equity, both with different municipalities as well as the county in general. Mental health, for instance, is one of the issues that is addressed on the strategic plan for the county, and they went through tireless efforts to look at that issue and establish committees, including the Behavioral Assessment Committee that I served on several years ago, that precursed the Mental Wellness Alliance. A lot of these issues with equity come from lack of ability to have services, and that is one thing that, as a county, we can continue to do better. Working for the police department, we've had a lot of training, both with implicit bias as well as crisis intervention, and it's critical that we, as a county, continue to look at these issues. If we don't first look at ourselves and any biases that we may have individually, we can't address those biases. We do have people in this community that are living in housing that is not adequate, that the sheetrock is falling off the walls, that we have bedbugs and different things that are occurring. And so, yes, there are more things that we need to do in order to ensure that everyone in this community is thriving, and that the quality of life is good for everyone across socioeconomic status, as well as race and other deciding factors.
Canis, you have 30 seconds to respond if you'd like.
Yeah, no, thank you. I just want to call attention, you know, when you originally asked the question, it was about racism, and some of the issues that we've spoken about are very important when we think about affordable housing. As someone like myself, who was raised by a single mother and grew up and lived in affordable housing, I understand what that feels like to be isolated and segregated out. The issue that we're speaking about now is racism and systemic racism, and it is a very serious issue. And the best way we can start by addressing this is to start by talking about it, create the community dialogue, and open that up to everyone.
Thank you. Shifting gears to another timely topic, the county government has led the local response to the coronavirus pandemic. Both of you have expressed support for how the county has handled the unexpected crisis so far, but what is one area that, in your view, the county response could have been improved? And how would you have made that happen? Melina, go ahead.
Thank you. I think the county has done a great job as far as their response to COVID, and there's been some really great collaborations that have occurred between other government entities within the Summit County area as well, including Park City Municipal and the School District and other east side commissions and councils as well. With that, I believe that the collaboration level that we have could improve. The communication that we have has increased during COVID, and we can also continue to increase that as well, to ensure that people that are living in areas where they don't have internet, which we found through this crisis, that there are areas within our county that don't have timely internet access, and that we can ensure that we're getting information to people that don't have the same technology. And that is a gap in service that we have found, both with our education, as we've turned to online education, as well as with government services and education regarding why we should be wearing a mask, and why we need to look out for each other with this very serious pandemic that we've been facing.
Canis, we'll turn to you.
Thank you. You know, if I was to look at the job the County Council's done, and really the staff of the county, I think they've done a great job. You know, really clear communication early on. If I was on the County Council, the things I'd be looking to do right now would be to amplify that communication. If anything, we need more communication now than we did going into the lockdown. There's a lot of confusion within the community about what is safe and what isn't safe, and we're getting this push-pull from national politics, we're seeing the state politics come into play, there's been questions in the council as to how much we should follow the governor's advice. And I think we're asking the right questions, but if there's anything I would do right now, I would start to communicate more than they even think they need to. I would do that if I was on the council. We need to look at ways to get our businesses back up and running and moving effectively, and not just survive COVID-19, but figure out how to thrive on the backend of this.
Melina, you have 30 seconds for a response if you'd like one.
Ensuring that the county again thrives is a very important focus that we all need to be focusing on. The county has a very unique opportunity with the Health Department housed there to be able to lead this endeavor. And as we move forward, that is something that I will focus on with the County Council that is currently established, to be able to continue serving all members of our population, ensuring that everyone has adequate communication and services as we strive to recover both business and individual families.
Right. Approximately $5 million worth of cuts have already been made to this year's county budget due to the pandemic, but the fiscal effects of the coronavirus are expected to linger for the foreseeable future. If further budget reductions are needed, what should be cut? Canis, we'll start with you.
Well, first, the easy thing to say is what we need to keep, right? So we need to keep things that kind of relate to life services, health, and the welfare of the people in our community. So that's a really clear area for us to focus is on, what are the critical priorities for us to maintain and to make sure we reinforce? Next, we start looking at what are the areas that we could reduce that would not negatively impact us, and start to figure that out. The real thing that we should be looking at here now is how do we start getting the economy back up and running? We're looking at a 20% unemployment rate, we're looking at businesses that have been struggling, and that's where my experience having not just two small businesses here in Park City and Summit County, but also 25 years of leading organizations at the executive level, we need to look at the root cause of the problem that is the budget, and get the money back in in the form of taxes and revenue through finding safe, creative solutions to getting our businesses back in business and thriving. So getting our groundwork or the operational piece back in play is a critical priority for helping us through the budgeting process.
Melina, go ahead.
One thing that's become even more apparent as we've entered into this crisis and seen the economic impacts that COVID-19 has had, is that government budgeting and business budgeting are not the same thing. With government, we have more people during downturns that need additional services, that our social services in particular become even more important as we have businesses that are suffering and families that can't pay their bills. And one area that I've been working on as a police department in managing the budget there is working to make sure that the level of service is retained. As previously stated, police officers do a lot of things for the community that are outside of policing. With community-oriented policing, we focus a lot on helping individuals and families and educating, and filling in some of the gaps that other social programs are not currently filling. With the police department, I have been going through the budget actively and looking at where can we take money from in order to be able to still provide these services and be there for the community. One area where I would take money from would be some of the areas as far as, well, first I would leave staff. I think staff is critical, we need to retain the institutional knowledge that is there, and we'd need to take areas from places, maybe training and do training in-house, or take money from other areas that would be less impactful to the community.
Canis, 30 seconds for a response.
Yeah, thank you. I think to say that government budgets and business budgets are different shows a lack of understanding of what our business community goes through. I respect understanding and experience with government budgets, having been around them as well, but truthfully, to say that they're different than a business budget is fundamentally a flawed logic. You essentially have money coming in and you have money going out, and you assign where the critical priorities are and where that budget needs to go. I think it's important that we have leaders that understand both the business community and the government, so it's important to have bring that experience.
Canis, I'm going to cut you off, we're going to be strict on the time limit. The unemployment in the county, the unemployment rate in the county during April, the most recent period with numbers available topped 20%, that's a staggering number, and it underscores exactly how much businesses and people are struggling in the community right now. What specific actions should the county government take to help the local economy recover from this deep downturn? Melina.
Leadership doesn't look just one way in this community. We have people in business that are leading, and we have people that are leading in all sectors. We've seen through this situation with COVID that our nonprofits have stepped up in an even bigger way than they were stepping up before to offer rent assistance to people that need it and people that are struggling. We have the Christian Center with increasing needs for food for people that don't have it. And as we move forward, we need to ensure that we have leadership from all levels, that we are not simply leading from strictly business perspective, but that we have representation from all levels of our community. As we move forward, we will need to continue this, and it is really crucial that with our businesses that we offer supports. There are ways with government that we can lead them, give them additional, we've done this with the Health Department, given masks, and we've given hand sanitizers so that we can safely reopen. And we're seeing spikes now, in large part due to business reopening, and it's likely with people not wearing masks that COVID is continuing to spread in that area. If we continue as government to encourage, educate people regarding these impacts, and also allow, offer support through some of these even simple means, it will help these businesses to recover in a stronger way as we move forward.
Canis, go ahead.
Thank you. I believe the question was around 20% unemployment and how to get our economy back up and running. And I appreciate that. You know, I'm fortunate enough to say that some of the social activities have taken place, as we all have, I've been part of. You know, as you might imagine, being a member of Rotary, I was actually out working those food drives, and that's great, and I really enjoy that. But we're looking at how do we get our economy turned around, and what can the County Council do about it? And the council's done a couple of things, you know, they looked at, could they get wrap tax and restaurant tax and take away the limitations on it? Now, wrap tax is a voter-approved fund, so it's not touchable, but restaurant tax is something that we can look to redirect, and you can use those funds in a number of ways. And one of the ways we can do is through social services, but also getting at the root cause of getting people back to work. So we have ways to adjust the funding, reallocate the budget as we're in the middle of this process. We also have the ability, as the council, to set the strategic priorities for the staff as well as those budget adjustments. And when we're working with county staff, we can work with our Economic Development Director and create programs to support small businesses. Now, that could be funding, but it could also be in resources. So we have a lot of tools that we have available to us, and if I was on the County Council, that's what I'd be doing.
Melina.
There are tools that are available to us, and as we move forward, if we're looking to our ski season or some of our large events that happen in the wintertime, if we're not intentional now, we may have a very different ski season or a very different event than we've had in the past. And so, to this point, with getting everyone back to work is essential, but getting back to work in a safe way that's going to allow us to continue to increase our economy and not have another shutdown is an extremely important point.
Moving on from the pandemic, there's a cultural divide between the county's east and west sides, and a longstanding concern among many east side residents that their views are not reflected on the County Council. Both of you live on the west side. If elected, how would you ensure you're representing the entire county? Canis.
Thanks, Bubba. That's another great question. You know, as it relates to relationships and representation, both on the east and the west sides of the county, truth is, it comes through time, relationships, listening, and trust. And so the fundamental core of this is you need to have trust, and to get that, you need to listen. I'm also fortunate, you know, because I do work with the Summit County Search and Rescue, it's predominantly made up of people on the east side. So last night, as an example, we answered a call for a stranded hiker. You know, my fellow search and rescue members, we rallied out at Echo Lake or Echo Reservoir, we staged there. It was called off, we then moved our way into the Uintas where we conducted training as we're preparing to look for a lost hunter from last year. And all that time is spent on the east side, for me, both working, but also personally recreating. So fundamentally, this is going to come down to listening to the people on the east side, representing those core values, keeping that sense of identity and that community that really is the cornerstone of Summit County, and making sure there's equal representation. But fundamentally, Bubba, it comes down to trust and relationships.
Melina, we'll go to you.
In order to serve the east side, we need to make sure that we have relationships with the leaders that are leading our municipalities on the east side, as well as the residents, so that we can gain information regarding how residents of the east side want to retain their quality of life. Both the east and the west side, I believe, have the same goal of retaining quality of life, and we have different ideas maybe of what that means and how we get there. And that's the information that we need to gather and ensure is represented, so we can have pathways forward that are representative. Even before announcing my candidacy, I began meeting with leaders on the east side so that I could gain additional information regarding the issues on the east side, which is why Mayor Francis has currently endorsed me as well, because he understands that we need to have leaders that are willing to talk. We need regional collaboration that includes the east side and the west. I've been on the east side assisting Summit County Sheriff's Office with unattended deaths and with domestic violence incidents when their victim advocates were unavailable. I understand that those issues are occurring on the east side as well as the west, and as we work together and truly listen to each other, that we'll be able to overcome collectively these issues that we face on both sides of the county.
Canis, you have 30 seconds for a response.
Thank you. You know, there's a couple of things to think about, too, as it relates to interacting with east side, west side. You know, if we talk about municipalities and governments, you know, one of the nice things when you're out working, say, with the search and rescue team, Kevin Todd, a 20-year city council member, is on that team. So I like the idea of rolling your sleeves up and working side by side with members of the east side, but it's also the things we need to look at is what's happening with the growth and development that's been pushing east, transportation issues, regionalization, and maintaining that sense of...
Canis, I'm going to stop you, and we're actually going to take a quick break. We'll be back after this with the rest of this County Council debate. Thank you.
Tune in to Mountain Connections here on Park City TV. Each day, we explore a variety of topics tailored to fit your everyday life. Mondays are Community Day, featuring some of your favorite local organizations and Parkites. Tuesdays are all about parenting, family, and education. On Wednesdays, we talk business and finance. Thursdays are all about health and wellness, and finally, Fridays are for sports, arts, and entertainment. Mountain Connections, connecting the Wasatch front and back every day at 8:00 AM, right here on Park City TV.
My name is Diego Zagara. I moved here from Peru in 2005 to go to the University of Utah. I stumbled on this place in '09 when a friend of mine asked me if I would be interested in subbing in an after-school program. After doing that for a couple of months, I fell in love with the kids, I fell in love with the families, and I fell in love with the work, primarily helping children have more access to opportunities as far as education and outside of the school walls. Currently, I manage an initiative that aims at integrating low-income children into the community using sports and recreation as a vehicle. This town is really generous and philanthropic and really cares about the sense of community. I certainly appreciate that aspect of Park City. My name is Diego Zagara, and I am proud to be a part of Park City.
Tune in every Friday night at 6:00 PM and 10:00 PM to the scoreboard on Park City Television, hosted by Conrad Yakabelis and Brett Martindale. We bring you in-depth local sports coverage, ranging from scores to interviews, even when the sports world slows down. Can't catch it live? No worries. Catch reruns Saturday and Sunday at 7:00 AM and 12:00 PM, only on Park City Television.
I'm Sadie Ortiz, and I've been living in Park City for 18 years. Growing up in Park City, it was kind of a rough start at a very young age, just because I didn't really look like the same as everyone else did around me. Elementary school and middle school and junior high was kind of a game for me, where it was like, how much can I make myself fit in? Until I came into high school and just kind of found like my mentors and my group and my clubs, and I became interested in the Chicano movement as a whole. So I feel that being like Hispanic, but also being a teenager, is bringing together a teenage group and a Hispanic group. With Latinos in Action, we go to McPolin, and we go and mentor those students. I'm showing my younger siblings like, hey, you can do it because I did it. Even if it's hard, if it takes hours, if you need other people to help you, you can still do it. Anyone in the community can. I'm Sadie, and I am proud to be a part of Park City.
I was a competitive snowboarder in high school, and I got hurt, took a tabletop too big a few too many times and landed on my hips and was having a fair amount of hip and back pain. So I started looking for what would help, and I found P. Agoscu and the Agoscu Method, and that really was the beginning of changing my life and changing my career path. I've been a posture therapist now for 15 years. And here, we're creating a customized set of exercises. It's all hands-off, but you really leave with a set of exercises specifically designed to your body. It's a joyful part of my life to be able to show up and make a difference. I've been here almost 13 years now. I really love it, it has all the things that I want, great community, mountains, skiing, it offers just that little bit more.
Tune into our all-new episode of Mountain Wellness, a show about mental illness and mental health. On this new episode, we focus on PTSD and veterans, as well as the organizations that support them. Head to our website, parkcity.tv, for all the programming information.
I'm Bubba Brown, editor of The Park Record. I'm joined here by the two candidates running for Summit County Council Seat C, Canis Hart and Melina Stevens, and we'll continue on with our debate. Next question, the dearth of affordable housing in Summit County is no secret. Many people, particularly those in the service industries that power the local economy, struggle to keep up with rising housing costs. What specific actions or policies should the county implement to increase the affordable housing stock? Melina.
We see a lot of issues with people commuting up from the valley or from Wasatch County or even parts of the eastern, far eastern parts of our county coming in and increased traffic even on the east side due to lack of affordable housing close to the resorts and areas where people are working. Summit County has attempted to be...
Melina, I think you're having some mic troubles, so let's actually go to Canis real quick while they take care of those troubles. And Canis, the question is about what specific actions or policies should the county implement to increase the affordable housing stock?
Thank you, Bubba. You know, as it relates to affordable housing, there's a couple of things at play, and fundamentally, to increase it, we need all kinds of affordable housing, in that we need rentals, we need for purchase. Something to know about affordable housing is the funding, and not that everybody wants to get into the details of that, but that is the key mechanism for developers and builders to convert or to build units that are affordable. So affordable housing is fundamentally driven by the funding mechanism, so understanding that and working with that as a tool is something the County Council can do. So if I was on the council, working with our Economic Development Director and looking at affordable housing, besides looking at trying to increase the amount of affordable housing, we look at how we work with developers on the funding and incentivize them. The other option we have is to work on density. Now, we don't want to dig more holes and build more to get ourselves out of this. We want to try to convert existing properties into affordable housing whenever we can, and the council has the tools to do that as well. But affordable housing is needed at all levels, it's needed in every part of the county, and the other thing that's a critical piece is someone who grew up in affordable housing, and I understand what it's like to be segregated in affordable housing. We need to integrate affordable housing into the community so that it's blended and that everybody feels to be a part of the greater success of Summit County. So affordable housing, all types, integrated into the community, and look at how we work with the funding.
All right, Melina, let's go back to you, let's give you a full 90 seconds, and the question again is what specific actions or policies should the county implement to increase the affordable housing stock?
We see as a county, both on the west side as well as increasingly on the east side, that it's challenging to find... that it's challenging to find affordable housing. With that, the county has addressed this through development agreements and through the code in securing that people have to develop a certain amount of affordable housing when they develop property. I believe that there is a large opportunity here for us to collaborate both with different municipalities as well as with the county and also to increase communication with those developers that are developing in certain areas. We all have the desire to retain the quality of life for this county, and this is one area where we really can make an impact. Also, having lived in affordable housing within this community, there's opportunity for us to increase our oversight for affordable housing, both to ensure that all of the time and energy we put into deed restrictions actually retain that and also that we are taking care of those people that are living in affordable housing. And this can be done through a regional housing authority that's focused specifically on affordable housing regionally and looking for opportunities where we can put new properties or develop existing units into affordable properties.
Thank you. We're going to go into the next question. Traffic congestion, particularly on the two entryways into Park City, remains one of the most pressing issues facing the county. One solution the county is considering is a bus rapid transit system on SR 224 that will allow buses to run in dedicated lanes and bypass traffic. But that would come at a significant cost to taxpayers stretching into the tens of millions of dollars. Is that worth the money? And what other solutions should be pursued either instead of the bus rapid transit system or in conjunction with it? Candace will give you 90 seconds to start.
Thank you, Bubba. I appreciate that. You know, the bus rapid transit is a great interim solution. We know that it functions very well. We need to step back, though. This is where we need to start thinking bigger picture. Now, as it relates to funding, you know, if we have the Olympics coming up, we have the opportunity, the chance to get federal funding. So putting that aside for the moment, the real question is, what is going to get people on and off our transit? What's going to get them to use it more? So we know depending on where you live, like for myself, I would have to walk two miles downhill. The bus stop near my house, it says just a stop sign on the road. There's no covering. In the wintertime, the snow covers that, so I would have to stand literally in the road to get on that bus. And that's just not something that someone's going to do. Once they get in their car and they start driving to get to that, then they stay in their car. So we need to make sure that the transit solution, which needs to look at it regionally, we have people in, if we take outside of the county in Wasatch, right? If we look at Heber, you know, they're transporting or coming in to work commuting. We've got people on the east side of the county. So we need to look at a regional solution. We need to look at this and step back from what the commuter experience is. What is it going to take to get them to get on the bus, to get where they're going? Is it going to be easy and accessible? Then you get to the bigger questions of funding and bus rapid transit, which, as said, is a great interim solution. But what's happening beyond that? And what are we going to look at for a solution for our kids and our grandchildren?
Melina, we'll go to you for 90 seconds.
One of the issues that we looked at during the Kimball Junction Master Plan Committee was the choke points on 224 right at the beginning at Ute Boulevard and also Olympic Parkway that, as well as the on-ramp, that looking at those areas, we're having some significant congestion that is not flowing through into town or the other areas where people are trying to go. Addressing those specific intersections as well as the on-ramp will be critical moving forward to ensure that we have a flow of traffic in that area. With the bus rapid transit, we, as the county, we've been working on that for years, looking at the sustainability now of that project and the impacts that it will have. With getting to this point, there's been a large public process that has taken place, and this was the interim decision that was made in order to assist with some of these larger-scale projects. We could get the Olympics, and we're able to put in some sort of additional infrastructure that would assist with some of our traffic-related issues. We also need to look at some of the lower-hanging fruit using technology such as with the Traffic Communications Center that was established with Summit County, UDOT, and Park City. There are ways that we can adjust traffic lights for the flow of traffic to increase the ability of people to get from point A to point B, and we need to be looking at all ways, both infrastructure and technology, to solve this problem.
Candace, 30 seconds for a response if you'd like one.
Yes, thanks. You know, something we need to keep in mind is if we widen roads, if we increase the flow of cars, we'll just get more cars. So we know that that is not the solution. The solution that we need to be looking at is how do we get people out of the cars and onto the buses? Right now, we're working with a strategy of remote parking lots. People can access the bus from there and then come into town. We need to continue to increase that. Having met with Carlos Peceras of UDOT, the scale at which they look at projects is 10, 20 years. We need to act now, and we need to reduce traffic as quickly as possible.
Piggybacking on transportation, the Park City Transit System has been a source of disagreement recently between the county council and the Park City Council. The squabbles highlight the larger issue of regionalization and the notion that no one local government can solve the problems facing the Wasatch back alone. You both have expressed support for working with officials in Park City, those on the east side, and those in Wasatch County. How would you, as just one county councillor, push those relationships forward in a way that results in actual solutions? Melina, we'll give you 90 seconds to start.
Having worked for Park City Municipal for almost seven years and working in various boards and commissions, I have had the opportunity to develop relationships both with council members as well as staff that are instituting these objectives and helping the county to reach these goals. Because of the relationships that I have developed and continue to develop, I am uniquely situated to be able to assist with some of these issues. I understand at a fundamental level how Park City Municipal operates. Having also worked very closely with the sheriff's office and the Summit County Attorney's Office, the Planning Department, and other areas within Summit County, I also have the relationships in order to forward some of these projects. On the east side, I've also been developing relationships, and truly, as stated, it is through relationships and through regionalization that we're going to get to this place. Understanding just what structure looks like on paper isn't enough to be able to get us to a place where we can collaborate and really forward these goals. Understanding that comes from being within an organization, understanding who is doing what makes a massive difference in being able to forward these objectives. I lead through listening. I lead through collaboration, and that is one area where I am strong and will continue to do so as we move forward in establishing some of these regional housing authority or regional transit authority moving forward.
Candace, we'll go to you now.
Thank you. You know, having had the opportunity to work abroad, both internationally in Europe and in Asia, something that I've had to do consistently is to negotiate and to work with groups and bring them together to reach an objective. The key to this, the first thing you really have to be willing to do is to just put your ego aside. You need to try to establish what the end goal is, what we're all trying to achieve. Once everybody is on the same page and understands what the end goal is, then we start looking at the solutions and how do we get to those goals. It's about supporting the members of that conversation that are around you. It's about active listening, and it's about those relationships. For me, fortunately, having worked at the Kimball Arts Center for the last year, putting on the Kimball Arts Festival as their event manager and meeting with city council on a regular basis, I also have the pleasure of being in Park City Rotary Club with a couple of the members and friends with two others. So clearly, having been in the county for 14 years, I have deep relationships with the key players. I understand that we need to bring everyone together to reach the common end goal or solution first, and then we can figure out how we achieve that. So really, it's going to come down to relationships. It's going to come down to getting everybody together and trying to achieve the greater good for the community. If we do that together, we'll be successful.
Melina, would you like to respond?
In order for us to represent all members of the community, we need to ensure that our councils are reflective of our community. We need to ensure that we are looking at policy from a place of how it impacts individuals and individual families. And with these relationships, we need to have the right people in the room and around the table to allow us to get to that place, to allow us to be able to serve both businesses and the individuals within this community.
As members of the Snyderville Basin Planning Commission, you are both very familiar with the proposal the developer has submitted to build a mixed-use project of more than 1.5 million square feet in Kimball Junction at the Tech Center site. Perhaps unsurprisingly, the proposal has sparked concern from residents worried about traffic congestion, overdevelopment, and other issues. Is the development of this kind and this magnitude appropriate there? Candace will begin with you.
Thank you. So I should just set this up with, we're probably both going to be somewhat limited on the depth or the details we can get in, but...
And what are the specific considerations that ultimately shape your vote on a project like this?
Yeah, see, then I'll frame kind of maybe what's going on there just quickly. You know, to say that essentially you have the tech park, and when the tech park, that development agreement was created, what we have is it was sold, and we have a new buyer that's come in. And now that they've purchased this, they would like to convert that. The Planning Commission is under no obligation to grant that request. In fact, this is a legislative decision, and one of the nice things here is that we get to take in public hearsay and comment. So this is a decision that fundamentally comes down to what is best for the community and what does the community want. They're proposing a project with 1,100 condos, a hotel at one end and an office park at the other. One might assume if someone did that, there'd be increased traffic seven days a week, and that becomes a critical issue and a concern. So it's important to note that the Planning Commission and the county council are under no obligation to do anything. We simply need to evaluate this application and figure out what is going to be the best for the community. So that's probably the key thing to know is that that's what's going on. From that, you know, we'll see where all the fellow commissioners come out.
Melina, likewise, you're tasked with evaluating this project as well. What considerations would go into your ultimate vote on this project?
With this and with other projects, I try to approach them thoughtfully, looking at the code specifically as well as the impacts from the community. And I very much appreciate all of the community input for these decisions because it really does assist in shaping, especially when we have these types of legislative matters. We want to make sure that we are reflecting what the community is looking for with this project. With that, we are absolutely looking at traffic impacts. We are looking at the housing and the connectivity overall of the project and how it connects to projects that are close to it. If someone living in the affordable housing in this project, if approved, could they easily walk to the Transit Center or walk to Walmart to get their groceries? We want to make sure that as we're approaching this or any other large-scale projects, that we are intentionally looking at this from how it will both impact but also integrate within the community. And that is really where I have strived to take this project as we've moved from some conceptual, large-scale ideas to now a project that is more in line with what this developer feels they can actually build at this time.
Candace, a 30-second response if you'd like it.
Thanks. This is a good point of differentiation between the two of us. I think you can hear probably in our answers our different takes and approaches here. For me, this is simply, we don't have to do this. Someone's going to have to show us a really good reason why we want to have a project if we were inclined to do so. You know, they're proposing 308 affordable housing units. 100 of those are between the 40% to 60% AMI, and that will generate that much need just in the hotel project alone. So it's not a net gain for the community. If anything, it's just going to break even.
Candace, I'm going to cut you off. Thank you. We're talking about growth on the west side, and growth on the west side obviously gets a lot of attention, but it's no longer an issue only facing Park City in the Snyderville Basin. East side residents are also now worried about development in their backyards, perhaps most exemplified by the controversy surrounding the Wahali development in Colville. How can the county mitigate growth on the east side to ensure the rural identity that residents value there remains intact? Melina, we'll start with you.
I think it's really important, first of all, that we truly do a listening tour among our east side and ensure that we are capturing all of the opinions and desires on the east side. For a lot of residents on the east side that have done agriculture, that have been involved in ranching, there is a desire to retain the value of their land, and taking development rights off of that land can decrease some value there, and that's something that is a concern. The idea that we can simply not approve projects or put a moratorium in place on development is, in my opinion, unwise because we live in a state that has laws that are in place, and we want to ensure that we are complying with that, that we are intentional, that we are doing what is best for the community on the east and the west side. On the east side, we need to make sure that we are intentional. We have the village overlay zone that allows to clump development so that we can, again, retain some of the agricultural and open space area that we've enjoyed for so long and that the east side has come to rely upon. And that would be something and a tool that I would want to further explore as we move forward that is yet to be tested, is looking on the east side and how we can further clump some of that development to retain the open space that is there.
Candace, go ahead, 90 seconds.
Could I ask a favor? Could you just restate the question for me?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
We're talking about what can be done at the county level to ensure that residents concerned about growth on the east side will be able to maintain the rural identity of their communities and be able to have that for generations going forward.
Thank you, and thanks for restating that. I appreciate it. You know, it's a great question because there is, you can see this pattern of what's happened on the west side of the county, and we can look to the east side and try to get ahead of the curve. Like in big-picture sense, we have 35,000 people in the Snyderville Basin, the greater Park City area, 45,000 people total in the county. What we see, the growth and development happening on the west side, is moving east already. They're already feeling it, and how we get ahead of this is what's going to be important. That's going to be working with landowners, working with conservation easements. You know, we've learned through the Governor's Office of Economic Development that if you can introduce trails and open space, it actually increases property value. So we have tools right now that we can use to preserve space on the east side and to help them shape the community that they would like. Like another number that comes from the Governor's Office of Economic Development is they're forecasting the population of the state to double in the next 30 to 50 years. When I moved here 14 years ago, the population was 2 million people. We're over 3 million in the state now. It's reasonable to assume that a large chunk of those people, and about 80% of that population lives in the greater Salt Lake area, they're going to want to move up here. They're going to want to enjoy all the great things that we love about living in Summit County. So we need to get ahead of this. We need to work with the landowners. We need to work with the municipalities on the east side to create a plan that works for them.
Melina, go ahead with a 30-second response if you'd like one.
On the east side, there is desire to continue to have open space as well. We need to be mindful and careful that we are not inserting Western ideals and Western ways of approaching these issues on the east side. We need to make sure that when we're looking at trails and open space, that we are doing this in such a way that is in coordination with the community and in a way that is appreciated and is the way that they would like it done.
The county has made significant strides in recent years toward addressing mental health, including the formation of the Summit County Mental Wellness Alliance and by entering into a contract with the University of Utah to provide mental health services on behalf of the county. What specific goals or policies should be enacted to make further progress on this important issue? Candace, we'll start with you.
Thank you. This is an incredibly important issue for me and for a number of reasons. It's probably more personal than anything, but having served in the Marine Corps and having had friends who have suffered PTSD and mental health issues as a result, I've been around this and seen the effects of it. And that's not that all mental health issues are that. That's just an example of something that I've experienced. You know, creating the support mechanism that we have in the social network is incredibly important. One of the things we need to understand is that when we talk about mental health, we should think about it as in our body, our physical fitness, our wellness, our being, and not have a stigma placed on it. One of the challenges that we face sometimes is that when people are having challenges with mental health, the system at which they go through is the policing system, and it's the wrong use. So bringing them into the social network and to the services is beneficial. For me, this is a critical priority and something that we need to continue to work on.
Melina, go ahead, 90 seconds.
Summit County has done a lot, as stated, through the Mental Wellness Alliance over the last several years to really start addressing this issue with mental health. We have come a long way in establishing additional resources as well as education within the community and started to approach the issue of really understanding what this is like for people. In the police system, we do deal with people that have mental illness, and that is impacting their lives and is why we have done so much training for critical incidents and for crisis intervention. So when people are going through these incidents, when we have individuals that are struggling, that we have the necessary training in order to assist them. And the sheriff's office has gone through the same training to be able to have the skill sets that when law enforcement is asked to fill in some of the gaps in our mental health system, that we can. And we do. We also need to increase the resources that are available and really the education and the ability for people to reach those resources. We need to allow for individuals to understand what therapists are available. We can have additional groups. We've seen through this pandemic the turn to some virtual therapy and virtual groups, and there's large opportunity for us as a county to support those initiatives and efforts that can have real impact on individuals and families.
Candace, we'll turn to you again for a response.
Great. You know, I would say as a county council person, this is an area that we can affect because we can make this a critical or strategic priority within the county, and we can direct funds and resources to that. So if I was elected to the county council, this being a critical priority, I would highlight it, direct the resources needed, and try to push for as much as we can possibly get.
Many older residents have expressed frustration with the lack of resources and senior housing available. available in Summit County. Some have even moved away from Summit County to access those resources. What should the county do to address those shortfalls and make our community more welcoming for senior citizens? Melina.
The county and other municipalities within the county need to really focus on addressing this issue. In discussions with seniors within the area, there are several areas that are really a struggle at this time, that the seniors need a permanent place where they can gather. In Park City, there are other senior centers where other seniors within the county can gather as well. We need to ensure that there is consistent funding. Some suggestions have been forming 501(c)(3) so that there can be additional revenue opportunities and assisting with the establishment of something like that and also the funding, assisting with funding. I helped with the Utah History Lecture Series, which was an event that was geared towards seniors to allow them to gather as well as have some interesting presentations. We need more of these types of events within the county that can allow our seniors to both gather, to enjoy one another's company. We also need to look at the housing situation as well because if seniors are living in larger houses or on ranches and can no longer take care of those properties or want to, there aren't a lot of options within the community. There's not a senior-type facility where people can have the ADA access available, and apartments and smaller type of units are hard to come by and often used by our workforce as well. So there are some issues there.
Canis, go ahead.
Thank you. You know, it's clear that we need a balanced and holistic society and community, and that includes people that are new and coming into the community, and it includes our seniors who have been with us for a long time and quite often pioneered the community that we live in, that we benefit from. The ability to age in place is an issue of necessity, is an issue of respect, and it needs to be made a critical priority. If I was elected county council, this has been stated in all the documents I've put out, it's one of my critical priorities. It's something that I would champion and I would really push for. And that's fundamentally what needs. I don't think the council has lost sight of this need. It's just of all the things one is dealing with, it tends to get pushed down on the list, and it's not being made a priority. It needs someone to champion this. It needs someone like myself who will come into the council, make this an issue that I will raise to the forefront day in and day out on behalf of all members of our community. We all benefit when we have a strong, thriving senior community. We need the ability to age in place. We need to do so with respect. We need to do so in a way that makes someone comfortable, and it's a critical priority that I'm focused on.
Melina, back to you for a 30-second response.
Having a young child in this community that will soon be entering our public schools as well as really engaging with members of the community, it is critical for me, even as a mother, that we have our senior population well taken care of, that we have programs that are in place that allow all of us, including our children, to learn from their experience, to understand how they established, built this community, and that we can really take note of all of the contributions that they've done.
All right. I think we're running short on time, but I'd like to allow each candidate one minute and a half to give a closing statement. Melina, let's start with you.
Thank you very much for listening with us at this time. It is critical at this time that we have a diversity of skill sets that is represented on our county council. With Kim Carson retiring from the county council, we will have a loss of someone that has a focus on social services and education within our county council. We have four very accomplished businessmen with various backgrounds that are currently serving on our council that have brought a lot of foresight and have brought their lens to conversations over the years. We have a Vietnam veteran that is serving us currently that is giving a lot of insight into those issues as well. We need to retain a similar skill set that is currently on the council. It is critical that we have leadership that is focused on the impact of policy on individual lives. We are not running for CEO of the county. We are running to be a member of a decision-making body that is focused on making decisions that are going to impact and help everyone. And as we look at the current county council, the skill sets that I have are not represented. When I am elected, I will be able to retain a focus on the individual impacts of these decisions and help forward these important initiatives, both understanding how it impacts the government budget and understanding how it impacts individual families and lives.
Canis, 90 seconds for a closing statement.
Well, Bubba, thank you for moderating this. I really appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for listening. I'm Canis Hart, and I'm running for county council. You know, there's some things that I bring to the council that are different than my opponent does and that the current council members have. It's a false narrative that there are four businessmen, as is often stated. The reality is, we have a lawyer, we have a planner, we have a retiree, and we have, I'm not sure what you would call Chris, a land baron or a developer, but the skill set that I bring, when you think about, I've had two small businesses in the community. That's something that no member of the council has. That business insight is really key when you think about what's the critical priority right now? What is happening that we're trying to address? We're looking at a downturn in our current economy, 20% unemployment. We need to get out of this recession and start working to thrive. So I would say quite the opposite. My business experience is exactly the skill set we need right now. It's the, if you were hiring someone for a job and you looked at resumes, you would say, oh, this is exactly the person who's going to help get us out of there. Other things that I would bring to the council that don't exist, having grown up in affordable housing, I can actually relate to that on a very personal, real level. As a father with two children in Jeremy Ranch in Ecker Hill, I know what it's like to raise kids in our school system. I'm also the only member, or would be the only member of council that would have worked for a nonprofit, the Kimball Arts Center. I really hope you consider giving me your vote. I have the right skill set, the ability to work with everyone, and to negotiate on the best and the behalf of us as a community. I'm here to fight for us.
To wrap up, I'd like to thank both of you for participating this evening. I know it takes a lot of courage to run for public office. As for voters at home, registered Democrats should begin to receive ballots for this race in the mail in the next few days if they haven't received them already, while people who are not registered with the Democratic Party have until June 19th to request a mail-in ballot from the Summit County Clerk if they would like to vote in this primary. Let's send it over to Tom Kelly.
Well, thank you very much to our candidates, Canis Hart and Melina Stevens. We appreciate your dedication in running for office. As Bubba said, you have until June 19th to request a Democratic ballot. On behalf of us at the Park City Rotary Club, a big thanks to our media partners in our community, The Park Record loaning us Bubba Brown for the evening, and KPCW and Park City Television running it live. On behalf of Park City Rotary, thank you very much, and don't forget to vote.